Well, good evening and welcome to this meeting for Tuesday, January sixteenth. If everybody could please stand for the flag of allegiance.
I dedicate my name to hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the state and the Constitution of the state of Ohio. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duty as a member of the Board of Education for all those in the school district or in town in Ohio to the best of my ability in accordance with the laws now in effect and thereafter to be enacted during my continuance in said office and until my successor is elected.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Haynes. Roll call, please. Mr. Grigsby.
Here.
Mr. Haynes.
Here.
Mrs. McCarthy. Mrs. Saxon.
Here.
Mr. Vaca.
Here.
Uh, Ms. McCarthy unfortunately is feeling under the weather. Before we infer, kids, if you don't already know, I typically get to give you this good news, but no school tomorrow.
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on December fifth, twenty twenty-three, and December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Move.
Move on to Saxon, second to Mr. Grigsby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy. Mr. Vaca.
Yes.
All right, we'll run into the superintendent's report.
Okay, I'd first like to call to the podium Mayor Kevin Corcoran, who has proclamation to the Board of Education.
Ah, board members, super talented. Thank you for having me here today. I'm sure the balloons gave it away, but it's Board of Education, it did not. Uh, I have a proclamation to give on behalf of the city to, uh, for you and your work on behalf of the community. Uh, it starts off with, whereas the mission of our public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent and productive contributors to a democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas our local school board members are committed to our children and believe that all children should be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas our local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the school district. And whereas these school board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and a commitment to our children's futures. And now therefore, I am Mayor Kevin Corcoran, do hereby declare that my appreciation to the members of the North Ridgeville School Board claim the month of January twenty twenty-four as School Board Recognition Month in North Ridgeville. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of the local school board members in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. So congratulations and thank you for all that you do on behalf of us. And this does not happen every time you get sworn in, so.
If I could not pass it around.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Corcoran.
You're welcome.
So welcome, everybody. We do have an exciting night, uh, beginning with the snow day tomorrow. A whole day. Uh, but exciting that we were able to announce that tonight, so we can make some arrangements for tomorrow. Uh, but it is board appreciation, and this year's theme is launching our next generation. So talking a little bit about, uh, what we can do for our students as we think about the future, specifically as we embark on a construction project at a high school, we are really excited to launch our students really into the next generation here in North Ridgeville. So thank you for being here. It is school board recognition. We want to take this opportunity to thank these dedicated members of the board, President Frank Vaca, Vice President Kelly McCarthy, who sadly cannot be with us, but is joining us via Zoom, uh, members Marcy Saxon, Jeff Grigsby, and a warm welcome to our newest addition, Mr. David Haynes. The position you hold on the school board for North Ridgeville is a really important one. All of you have the ability to uphold the district's high standards, create change, and ensure educational opportunities for each one of our students. Our focus on developing the whole child launches our students into the next chapter of their lives, understanding our core values of service, teamwork, respect, ownership, necessity, and goals. We understand the sacrifices and the time commitment that comes with your roles, and we want to express our heartfelt appreciation for your selfless dedication. Your collaboration and commitment to excellence have not gone unnoticed, and the positive impact on our educational community is truly immeasurable. Among the five of you, there are forty-one combined years of school board experience in nine minutes. The changes you have made and the lives you have affected in that time have been forever altered by your work. Your efforts and leadership have played a pivotal role in shaping the educational landscape of our community and will continue to do so. Each one of you has brought a unique perspective and valuable contributions to the table, fostering an environment that prioritizes the well-being and the success of our students. We look forward to the continued collaboration and success under your leadership. Your service is a testament to your commitment to the betterment of the education of our district, and we are truly fortunate to have such a dedicated and very capable school board. Thank you for all you do. With your help, we are able to empower our students to design their future, preferred future. And on behalf of the staff of North Ridgeville City Schools, we do want to say thank you for all you do and all you do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
And generally, there are some presentations on school board appreciation by our buildings this year. Um, each board member was presented with a plaque that's specific to their role on the board as well as some different and interesting gifts that have been shared. So we are fortunate again for all they do for us. Thank you, and another round of applause for our Board of Education.
These are really cool. We have a star actually named after us with our nicknames attached to our personalities, so thank you very much. It means a lot.
Very thoughtful.
It really does.
Okay, next I would like to call to the podium, uh, in recognition of amazing students, Mrs. Andrew Devance from our ECLC building.
Okay, thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. This evening I have the pleasure of presenting our two Students of the Month, and I'm going to start with our first Student of the Month. Um, this is Liam Riolano. Liam, can you wave? They're all waving at you, but. Um, Liam is in Mrs. Dietz's preschool classrooms, and Mrs. Dietz says that Liam is the Student of the Month because of his fantastic progress. Uh, this is Liam's first old-school year of preschool, and he is doing an amazing job. Each day he comes in happy and excited to learn, and he tries everything in class and always makes an excellent effort to do his best. He makes friends easily and plays with everyone. We are so lucky to have Liam at our preschool. Congratulations, Liam. Our next Student of the Month is Cara Crady, and Cara, can you wave at her? And Cara, Cara is in Mrs. Barbara's kindergarten classroom, and Mrs. Barbara says that Cara comes to school daily, ready to learn, grow, and do her best. Cara gives a hundred percent in each and every activity she participates in, in the school day. She is a role model for all of her peers and a wonderful helper to the teacher. It's an absolute pleasure, Mrs. Barbara says, to be able to teach Cara. She cannot wait to see the growth she makes this year. Congratulations to Cara. And yes, I'd like to introduce, uh, Mrs. Stephanie from Liberty.
Good evening. Um, from Liberty, our first grade student of the month this month is Malia. Malia is in Miss Powers' first-grade class, and Miss Powers nominated Malia as Student of the Month because she is a wonderful example of Ranger Strong, and she is a great friend to all. She is eager to learn new things. She always gives her best effort, and she is respectful to her classmates and her teachers. Way to go, Malia. Keep up the great work. Our second grade student of the month could not be here tonight, um, but he is in Miss Nova's second grade class, and his name is Billy McFomis. Billy demonstrates Ranger Strong character every day. He is attentive, responsible, kind to others, and always does his best work. Billy is a friend to all, and we are so lucky to have him as our classmate. Way to go, Billy.
We'll do them.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Shane Solomon. It's my pleasure to introduce our Students of the Month from North Ridgeville Academic Academy or Ridge Ridgeville Academic Center. Leah, are you excited today?
Yeah.
Yeah, so excited that you're here. So Leah is our first student of the month. Um, here's what Leah's teacher said about her. Leah always participates in class and is the first to raise her hand to answer questions. Is that true? She has worked so hard on her math and reading goals and continues to make wonderful progress. Great job, Leah. That's amazing. Congratulations. Our next Student of the Month is Weston Becker. Let's take him up. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Here's what Weston's teachers say about him. Weston displays character, strong qualities at all times. He is a model student and a leader. He consistently shows respect to everyone he comes in contact with and is always kind and hardworking. He is a true delight and so deserving of this award. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Our next Student of the Month is Jonah Damon, sixth grade. Jonah, congratulations, sir. Here's what Jonah's teachers say about him. Jonah is a very kind, respectful, and hard-working student. He is a player to have in class. Keep up the good work, Jonah. Congratulations again, sir. Our last Student of the Month, Gabriella Kigley-Ay. Eighth grade. Congratulations. Here's what Gabriella's teachers say about them. Gabriella is Ranger Strong in all avenues and in studio, from perfectly broadcasting the morning announcements every morning, which is absolutely the truth, and cheerleading in the afternoon to helping others around her classroom. She has gone up, gone above and beyond to be a fantastic student, classmates, and personally. Congratulations, Gabriella. And she said, you're excited. I don't know why. Those are the reasons. I'm going to turn over to the Mr.
Hi, everyone. My first Student of the Month could not be here today. She is joining us on Zooms, um, but this is Monroe Nairable, and she was nominated by Coach Zachary, um, for her display of ownership. So this is what Coach Zachary had to say about Monroe, about Monroe. Monroe has shown great ownership of her learning. She understands and follows classroom expectations, collaborates with other learners, and takes time to really understand whatever concept we are learning. Monroe is learning how to be an effective leader in her groups, and she has shown growth in keeping up with her classroom. Keep up the amazing work, Monroe. And then my second Student of the Month.
Sorry, didn't know when to go low.
My second Student of the Month is Tommy Tiffka. Tommy is in seventh grade, and he was nominated by, um, Coach Megan Wood for his teamwork. And this is what Coach Wood says about Tommy. Tommy does an amazing job contributing to a team through the use of his inquisitive thinking and interest in the topics and world around him. Tommy is always willing to contribute to the greater good of the group by telling his thinking and questioning those around him to ensure the success of the team. Tommy is patient and willing to work through any issues that present itself. Amazing job, Tommy. Keep up the great work. I'd like to present Mr. Mueller, who will, um, announce our high school student.
Thank you, Mr. Turpin. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do as board members. Appreciate your willingness to step up, lead, and serve. Really appreciate your idealism, but more than anything else, we appreciate either the innate or acquired ability that you have to understand how emotion plays into the lives of our students and staff, not only in the North Ridgeville schools, but across our state and across our nation. Your ability to process that emotion, to reflect on, to share it out with us as educators, families, and communities in reasonable ways is what keeps our house in order and allows us to do what we do. So thank you and congratulations. Um, I have my phone out, and I'll tell you about that later. Uh, I have two Students of the Month, again, in the class of twenty twenty-four. We have so many outstanding students, but tonight we're going to recognize only two of them. Our first student is Mivon Pham. Mivon, can you come up, please? If you've seen the North Ridgeville Marching Rangers, you know Mivon Pham. She told me you are a field major.
Field commander.
Field.
Commander.
Field commander. Field commander. And commander really helps everyone understand just who Mivon is. She is a commander. She is a boss. She is driven. She is focused. She wants feedback and recognition, but then she's moving on. It's like, thank you, I'll make it better. Mivon was nominated by North Ridgeville High School staff for being a fabulous example of Ranger Strong and G-Bed. She's always helpful to both teachers and students. She's a member of our National Honor Society and the Cleveland Youth Wind Symphony. Her favorite class is Anatomy and Physiology. She hopes to attend the Ohio State, the Ohio State University, and after college, Mivon hopes to become a pediatrician. In her free time, you can find Mivon playing piano or horn or working out. When she took the SAT last spring in a room of three hundred and forty stressed-out juniors, she came out and said how to do. She said, thank you, Mr. Mueller. I think I crushed it. Everybody else was looking for a drink of water. So I present Mivon Pham as North Ridgeville High School Student of the Month for January. Our next Student of the Month is Anthony Shealy. Will bring your letter jacket, bro? Come on, bring it up. I love letter jackets. We need to make them a thing again. Some schools do. Anthony does. Put it on. Let people see it. Look at that. We got a lot of gear. From my generation and all succeeding generations, letter jackets mean something. Anthony's letter jacket demonstrates how much he is enjoying his high school experience. Anthony is not someone that you would recognize every day for some incredibly outstanding feat, but he is a young man who shows up, looks at expectations, and develops a plan to meet those expectations. He is a member of choir and band for four years. We can't do arts without Anthony Shealy. Anthony is one of hundreds of thousands of students across the country that ask the question that we all ask. Does anybody recognize me? We do. We thank you. He's a member of the Leo Club. And I have my phone out because Anthony is a member. He is a member of our reorganized Ranger Service Learning Program, where our seniors engage in learning in, um, the social sciences and English language arts, as well as dedicating themselves to a community service component. And as part of that program, and board members, you can't see that, but each student has a tracker that tracks their progress and documents their service to the world. We will be sharing that data with you when we do our high school report. For our families, this document announces Anthony Shealy's benefit to the world. He has, how many hours now? Sixty-one point two?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one point two hours since like I, since like the mid-September or October. And when you calculate the benefits to the world, if there was a dollar figure, and I think they'd go like thirty bucks an hour. In one semester, Anthony has provided at least a two-thousand-dollar benefit to this community for his service, service in ending poverty. Good health and well-being and better community and community service. It's what we all aspire to. It's what these individuals do in their own way. It's what all of these adults want in our community. So we thank you for that, Anthony, and we congratulate you on being Student of the Month.
Thank you.
We have all of our Students of the Month up in front of our background for a picture, please. Little all-stars in the front. Big all-stars in the back. You're up, okay? Come on. Come on, big boy. Tiffka?
Yeah.
I don't care. I'll watch for you. Take a knee, ma. Take a knee. Kneel down right there with.
All right, ready? Here we go. One. Awesome. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Danny Hosteller to the podium to recognize two outstanding North Ridgeville staff members of the month.
After that, they're going to start letting me go first, so I don't have to follow up Mr. But each month, um, I have, uh, the honor of congratulating two staff members, uh, one certified and one non-certified, for and recognizing the great work and, um, extreme care that they give our students. So this month, um, as always, our first award winner, um, neither of them could be with us in attendance this evening, but want to recognize Mrs. Caitlin Mills. Caitlin was first hired as a paraprofessional instructional aide in high school this past August. Prior to her joining the North Ridgeville City Schools, Mrs. Mills worked as a direct support professional and is involved in 4H and F-A outside of the school day. One of Caitlin's colleagues had this to say about her. Caitlin is a phenomenal employee. She is a very attentive, kind, and motivated individual who always goes above and beyond. She takes initiative and anticipates her students' needs. Caitlin jumps in and to help wherever needed and truly deserves recognition for her hard work. Congratulations, Caitlin, and thank you for your dedication to our students. Our second employee this evening is Mr. Matthew Ponting. Matt is a physical education teacher here at the Academic Center. He was first hired for that same position in two thousand and ten. Um, he has also built, um, a very successful varsity baseball and golf program as our head coach here at, uh, the North Ridgeville City Schools. One of Matt's colleagues had this to share. Mr. Ponting is not only a great teacher, but a great role model for his students. In addition, Mr. Ponting is an outstanding coach for both baseball and, uh, golf. Mr. Ponting has a positive attitude and is a great leader for our students at both NRC and NRHS. Congratulations, Matt, and thank you for the care that you show our students and our student athletes. And I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Board of Education, especially, you know, it's quite a nice recognition, uh, for you, um, always, but publicly for this month. Um, and also to thank our parents and our staff members, um, and students who nominate our staff members each month, and we can encourage you to do so. Um, it's a great way to share, uh, the positive things that are happening in our buildings, and congratulations again to Mrs. Mills and Mr. Ponting.
Thank you. Congratulations to all our students and staff. I gotta tell you, we've been doing this a long time, and by far, these meetings are my favorite, recognizing our students, it'd be the passion in our staff, the excitement. It's also genuine and sincere. But North Ridgeville is lucky to have the individuals we have in our buildings, uh, making an impact in our children's lives, and the impact you kids make is every bit is impressive. The things you do in your buildings, the things you do with your classmates. Keep doing what you're doing. Keep excelling and just keep reaching for the stars, and I promise you, you will get there with this amazing staff that we have in all our building. Congratulations to our staff and our students. All right, so here's an opportunity. If you want to run as fast as you can, or you can stay through the rest of the meeting. No, staff, you have to stay. No, staff, you have to stay.
All right, we'll go ahead and we'll move uh into the consensus again. I forget this, but it's typically because there's nobody in attendance at this point, but here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. There is nobody here, so we will move into the consensus agenda. Um, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consensus agenda resolution as presented.
Who?
Second. Moved by Ms. Saxon, Ms. Grigsby. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. McCarthy?
Mr. Vaca? Yes. The finance report. There are two financial recommendations for the board's consideration. The first item is a resolution to approve the financial statements and reports for the month of December twenty twenty-three. The second item is a resolution authorizing the treasurer to accept tax settlement funds electronically from the Lorraine County auditor. I move to approve the financial items at one reading.
Second. Moved by myself, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Under Buildings and Operations Report, it is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting.
Who?
Second. I'm a Saxon, I'm Mr. Grigsby. Roll call, please. Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Human Resources Report. Mr. Haynes?
All right. We have a few items to consider under the Human Resources Report. We have two certified deep replacement contracts, one certified substitute contract, one support staff appointment, one NREA supplemental contract, three unpaid volunteer recognitions, two certified staff adjustments, one certified staff leave of absence, and two support staff resignations. Move ahead the Human Resources items in one reading.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Haynes, seconded by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
It is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn this regular meeting.
Who?
Second. I'm a Saxon, I'm Mr. Grigsby. Roll call, please. Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Mr. Vaca?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.